Today is Wednesday, November third. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Persian County Board of Commissioners. To call this meeting to order, our first item of business is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of minutes, we have some minutes from October sixth.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for approval, all those in favor?
Aye.
Public input, public comments and discussion. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Public commentary will generally be limited to three minutes per person. Any public comments? But on your side, Justin? No other comments. Number three, review of all agenda items to determine if any do or do not impose a direct and significant economic burden on a business. Or directly restrict the formation, operation, or expansion of a business.
I didn't see any. I didn't either, and I'll make that motion. I'll second.
The motion is second, all those in favor? Aye, motion passed. Road Department.
Great.
Patch tungsten, we were patching tungsten before the big monsoon hit.
Monsoon.
Quite get it all done like we was hoping to, but we made a pretty good dent in it. Long overdue, we should have been up there two years ago. It was getting where you know you couldn't miss the hole, so we got most of them. We're gonna go back and get them probably this next spring. Also, we also sand up decor. And then basically, well, we were fixing. We're fixing washouts, but we're actually blading, some of them that are not so bad, so we're blading our way there, but oh, we had washout to core Willow Creek, Condy, Kyle Hot Springs, Buffalo Springs Road, American Canyon, Limbo, and Ragatta. So basically everywhere.
Everywhere.
Some of those actually were the rain event, that was like a week before the big event. We had some really heavy both lives raining out there in the Sioux Hills. So that was previous, but mostly it was that Sunday raining, twelve hours of rain, or whatever it was. Putting down some water, anyhow. So needless to say, we're we're outblading, we're blading Buna Vista, the new guys out there with Jerry learning how to blade, so that's a good thing. Galen's on Ragatta, helping C Punch out, headed towards Limbo. Robert, the other newer guy, he's got a year under his belt now, he's on Pleasant Valley. He's actually headed back to Grass Valley today. Went road checking out there yesterday and Bandeese, one of the roads that we paint, or I guess it plum fell apart, so I'm having him head in there, he's gonna work on that. And had some other complaints to Grass Valley. Where he was, it actually dried already unfortunately, so it's for the best. He also worked their way in for ways now he's gonna work in and work his way back out Grass Valley on a busiest road. And then Kevin and Bill are working on Fence Maker, now they're headed over to the Sioux Hills to fix all those washouts, so. And then we went and got salt, Buck salt, we've got most of that mixed up, so we're ready to go with salt sand for the winter.
Yeah.
That's pretty much all I have.
Where does, no Herschel Road, you made a comment that that isn't a county road.
Oh, it is.
It is all the way down.
Yeah, we we maintain it to Donegan.
That's what I thought, that's what you said. So you maintain it to Donegan?
Yeah.
And that washout was a little bit past.
Yeah, now we've gone further, had some complaints.
Yeah.
The Herschel Ranch guy, he's been complaining forever, wanted wanted us to fix that road.
Oh.
We finally had time, so we did it. There's about seven residences out there, so. Yeah, we just extended, I mean, it's not a perfect road, and then we just got it done, put culverts in, and it washed out pretty good. I guess I didn't mention Herschel, it had some washouts as well.
You put in four or five culverts in there?
Yeah, lucky, I mean, what would we?
They stick out like a sore thumb.
Yeah, it would have washed out that whole stretch of road had we not. Yeah. Yes, sir.
Good job.
Did you talk to Core Rochester about the road I asked about?
Yes, ma'am, Rochester came. They're they're working with NV Energy to get that fixed, so that worked pretty good for me, because we have way bigger priorities right now.
Are they going to continue to maintain that road then?
We don't have an agreement for that. I don't, I wouldn't say that. That's our road, American Canyon's our road. Rochester is our road, but it's a minor road. We've laid it once a year if we have time, so.
Well, if they're gonna keep taking equipment up there and tearing it up.
Yeah, no, they they agreed, they agreed it was a solid their thing. So it's on them right now. I don't know how much impact they're gonna have in the future. Of course, they're drilling up there now, so. Yeah, we we work pretty good with them, but we don't have nothing on paper for Rochester.
Okay.
So maybe we should have, I don't know, I'm sorry.
Good.
Yeah, and we can, yeah, they're very agreeable with me if it came into happen. It's basically kind of a two-track road really this time of year, a four-wheel drive road, I would say. So you can still get up there, you know, it's just not great.
And even before, we really didn't have an agreement with them, but it's more of a gentleman's agreement that when they did damage to the road, they were going to repair it, and they consistently got that.
Yeah.
For the last several decades.
Yeah, like, yeah, in the future, yeah, we'll probably look at that if they're gonna keep their back in that road. But I suspect they won't say that, I mean, though they got the the power lines built. It's completely, the heavy works down. So. Yeah.
And I think all they're doing right out there now is exploration, making known Gold Hill.
I don't care. I don't know how that just slipped through the cracks, well, they, because we have an agreement for Packer, Packer Flats, that road really can grow with core, but just not not Rochester's, and obviously memory can.
Landville?
Don't have much for landfill. Was up there, looked around. They're doing a great job, it looks good. Honestly, haven't really talked to them much. We ordered a bunch of signs, we spent quite a bit of money on signs, and Stephen's got plans to streamline the process, and he's right. I don't know if you guys have been up there, he's got it almost done, almost ready to go, it looks really good, he's got each area cored off with tires, tire walls and cones and stuff, it looks good.
And the transfer sites, how are they?
Oh, neat and clean. We're headed up there to, the guys are headed up this Friday to clean Grass Valley. And Emily's not too bad, but we do have a little clean up there as well, so. Reminds me, you and you Bill, we need to go get it burnt, we haven't got that back yet, but we will. We gotta push that.
How much time do your guys spend cleaning the transfer sites?
Quite a bit, couple, probably four hours every two weeks. So, we, I, I spent a lot of time going back at one point here, what, a few months ago, Carol, to see what it costs us, and then I was really surprised, it's not that much, like for a whole year's worth of, the work we did was ten grand, as far as road, so. We'll address that when we get some more money in the landfill.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
We can post somebody up there, is what we need to do, to save a lot of that. I mean, we created a lot of the problem ourselves, putting a burn area in. But it's saved a landfill space, so it's a, it's going to.
Good, thank you.
Did you wanna talk about the landfill ordinance while you're here?
Um, yeah, I don't know, Bryce, I think I'm happy with what you guys are doing to that end.
Okay. So me, Dan, Lori, and the DevNet representative, I don't remember the name, sorry.
Roxanne.
Roxanne. We all met last week for about two hours, and we reviewed the last ordinance, and I know that's on the agenda, that's a time to that. But the reason I'm bringing up well dance here is that there was a lot of good feedback that we got from Roxanne on how to implement the new land ordinance, and how to get, and how to revolve that, that. We got a lot of good feedback, Lori's the assessor, she provided some good insight, good perspective on how the ordinance can be approved, as is. Well, I say as is, but what I'm what I'm really saying is, we probably need a few more weeks to find two new ordinance to get it exactly the way that we need to get it for DevNet and also the assessor, so it's not ready to go, and I intended to call the county clerk and let her know, because I know that she advertises every single time. So I'm very, very sorry for that, but it's not ready to go.
So when we get to that one, then there's not really, so sorry, sorry, Lisa.
But I think that's good that we get it so that it can be implemented without too much difficulty.
Yeah. No, I'll tell you, I'll tell you when.
Don't do it yet.
We probably need to have one more meeting with Lori and with Roxanne and Dan, and just make sure that everybody's on the same page and everybody likes it. And that it's something that the assessor's office can actually do, and something that DevNet can actually plug in through our software and make it work. But we have time, it doesn't have to be implemented until next year, so, but I anticipate that we'll get it done before the holidays, so. No, no, I I just wanted to bring it up while you were here.
Yes.
Dan provided some good input as well.
Great.
Again, sorry, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, the next item is Senior Center Volunteer Coordinator. I don't really have the updated numbers. And Giselle, of course, is not here. So on CDBG grant selection of a bid to to purchase HVAC equipment not to exceed the grant amount of thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. Others, did they take labor out of here now? Because there was a, something about we we couldn't include labor?
But the combined bid is forty thousand, eight fifty-four. Yes. Well, we put, Rain, do you remember how much we put in capital projects to cover our portion? And that was supposed to cover the electrical and, you know, the upgrade and everything too. It may not be enough now. Is that the overage of a thousand, something would come out? And it was just a guess at the time that we did capital improvements.
Senior Center Electrical Upgrade, we put sixty thousand.
Okay. And that was just a guess, because we had no idea what NV Energy's portion is gonna be or anything else.
We had a grant application due the twenty-sixth of October, I did finish that. I did not have input as far as updated costs for that. But I put it in there, I put ballpark ring there. And we'll see what they do, it's just for the electric.
So, for energy, in the energy, in the new transformer, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Um.
And Rain has a comment.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion to go ahead and approve the bid from Oasis for the HVAC equipment not to exceed thirty-nine thousand, seven seventy-four, which is the CDPG grant amount. I will second.
We have a motion and a second for approval, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Billings and grounds.
Good morning.
Box for, that was been gone for the last weekend and a half.
Good for you, hopefully.
No, really.
Oh, sorry, okay.
But my guys have been doing a lot of different things for everybody, helping Justin move. They've been doing a lot of workouts at the cemetery, using some more exit lights. About all, I mean, it's been a lot of doing that, so. Fuel cost that's coming in, I just got the the bill on that this morning when I came into work, so. That'd be coming through, and it was just over thirty-four thousand dollars, four thousand.
Let's have a quick count to, have you done the number?
Well, our cost is four twenty-eight. That's what we're willing to pay. I figured, looking at what the market is on everywhere else, we're probably charging five oh five, and we'll still keep this below everybody else. So we should have about a net of seventy-seven cents to clear over what we pay. For gallons.
Have you looked or checked other places, more five oh five, we're still under?
The closest one, closest, that is five oh nine.
Really?
Yeah, so. We'll see how long it lasts, but they all look like they were at the fuel about the same time I did, so.
Yeah.
Other than that, not a whole lot different to report. My guys have been, like I said, they've been I've been in contact with, you know, them, and I've been getting calls from the power company, not power company, but the alarm company because of the power events. Working on backup generators, cost, Bruce had called me over the weekend. Actually, last Friday, Monday or Friday, I can't remember which, but we've got two different options to go with either natural gas or diesel. Generators, at least give some of the buildings, the ones that need to be open, or need to have power on a constant, like the senior center with the freezer and the walk-in.
Did he give you a cost on that one? Because I did put that in my, that application, but.
I do have one set, one's a diesel, he was getting, one was natural, and he's gonna give me a one for diesel, so we can have a comparison.
Yeah, you got natural gas right there.
Well, one might be a little bit, it depends on how to operational cost. I just want to give us a choice to to look at both. There'll be one for Dadman Building, one for this building. And also one for the community center. The one at the community center is gonna be definitely the most expensive, but it's also the largest unit, and it needs to be because it's the backup for the hospital. But when I have all those numbers in hand, I will pass them off to y'all, and let y'all check it out.
Okay, great.
Got a few other projects that I've been trying to get pricing on, and part of it is the courthouse courtroom upstairs. They have, I think it's eleven windows across the top. And those, they're original windows, but the wood is starting to rot, and I don't wanna see it get much worse, but a a, just a plain nice window, kind of what we did here, but not, it doesn't need to be anything fancy, just a white window. My preliminary cost, I just haven't got it printed out yet, was about seventeen thousand dollars. That's installed, with a nice double pane window with colonial grid, so it'll still look old time, but it'll be white. Like I said, I'm just working, trying to work through that. Because I'd rather replace them before they actually completely start leaking. If possible, that's important to me now. Next year. Any other questions, concerns?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thanks, John, very much. Welcome back.
Library is, Cathy on? No. Fire an ambulance.
Your timing was good. Your timing was good.
Okay, so he might wanna give his report on your grants and on the fire, fire inspection.
Mike, you say he is on?
He is, he's locked.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so as on the EMS side of it, as far as ambulance calls from October tenth to November the first. We had thirty calls in those thirty days, and we just had one about an hour ago, so thirty-three calls in thirty days. I don't know if you guys are keeping track of these, but, you know, we're running about anywhere from one, one a day for the month, sometimes two or three calls a day, so. So you kind of know where we're going with that. Last night, we did CPR training for research. And we're still working on the research. We have one person out on medical right now for two months, and we are sending a crew to Utah, I think we have a deal on the agenda for the room rate increase. Pretty much can't get a room for what they were, I think it's a hundred and ten dollars tonight.
Yeah.
So we've got that in there.
How many are going? How many are going?
We're sending five, so. Anyhow, I guess my question is, is where are we at with the the last time we spoke, we were working on the job description? And I didn't see that on here this time, that that's been worked on yet, and I know we were talking about getting some bids from different ambulance services, where's that at? I think Bryce was working on that.
Still working on it.
Still working on it. So my question, my question is, we have been, this thing's been going on for almost a year now. We have it in our budget, we put it in the budgets, we put the ambulance in there, we put the extra people in there, we've done all that. We've sent it to committees, we've talked about it, it's a job description, Dr. Chris comes back, need to be changed.
The job description was inadequate.
Okay, so.
Worked on, and that's been worked on, Rodney.
So there was a few things.
As far as RFP goes, it takes time to develop those.
Yeah.
We talked about this, not even, we talked about this not even two weeks ago.
Okay, so.
So that's where we're at, the process.
Okay, so where are we going?
Where are we going?
Yeah, are we gonna do this, or?
Do what?
Do something with the ambulance service, we're working.
I guess we're, the board has manifested an intention
Yeah.
to, to hire the emergency service coordinator, or whatever that position is called. But there there needs to be some fine tuning done on that person's job description.
So what I'm wondering, are we waiting for the next next budget year, or what? Are we starting working on the next budget, or where are we, I mean, the ambulance?
Working on it, why are you beating on us?
Well, I mean, we've got, I mean, we come in here and ask for an ambulance, we're supposed to do it every five years, you've made two resolutions on how you were gonna do it, but we hear back that you don't have the money, you don't wanna, you can't do it that way.
And you know why we don't have the money, you know that.
Yeah, but it does state in there, if we don't have the money, we were, we were gonna take it out of the abhorrent tax of the emergency vehicle part. So we haven't even talked about that, right?
Is that on the agenda?
No.
I don't know why we're talking about it.
Okay, so anyhow, I'm just.
Rodney, if you wanna talk about these things, they have to be agendas.
Okay, well, I'm just letting you know that we're getting a little frustrated about where I am now.
That put it on the agenda, so it can be talked about.
So do I need to put it on the agenda that you're gonna have the job description done, and you're gonna have the?
You don't need to put that on the agenda, but if you wanna talk about that abhorrent tax and take it from that
Yeah.
and buying an ambulance, that stuff needs to be on the agenda, you know?
Well, I put it on the report, and we didn't give you, we just said we didn't have enough money.
Well, if there's no money, there's no money, right? I mean, what do you do if there's no money, Rodney?
What I wanna do is make a statement, that basically, you know, the, we've been doing this for ninety-some years, eighty years, doing the ambulance service. We've been doing it as a volunteer department the whole time. The Sheriff's Department, I can remember when the Sheriff's Department only had three people, and they, they get bigger every year, the budget gets bigger. Buildings and grounds budget changes, things get bigger, buildings need to be built, stuff like that. The, there's nothing ever been addressed on basically the fire and EMS.
You're saying that the EMS budget has not gotten bigger as well?
I'm saying it hasn't expanded compared to what the rest of them are. Yeah, have you looked at them?
Have you?
Yes.
I have the numbers to support that.
I can bring them back to you.
Okay. Are we doing, are we doing that, are we doing that this meeting?
No.
Is that on the agenda?
Okay, so I'm just gonna let, well, I just wanna tell you how frustrated we are about this, this whole thing. I didn't think it would take this long.
Rodney, we just started. We started this process how many months ago, when we formed the committee?
Per near, almost a year ago, because we're gonna, that was when we were doing budgets, we'd actually put it in the budgets and started talking about. Per near, almost a year ago, because we're gonna, that was when we were doing budgets, we've actually put it in the budgets and started talking about.
Okay, so it hasn't been quite a year because we did budgets last April, May, March, somewhere around there. It takes time. This county does not have the revenue sources that a lot of other counties have. We are working on it, we are trying, we're doing the best we can right now. We are trying to find a solution.
Also too, if the billing was being done properly, then we'd have more revenue coming in. I did do the Medicaid application and submitted it, I haven't heard anything yet, it's been a couple of weeks, but it is retroactive. To the date that it was submitted, but that was a process that me, as an uninformed individual could do, that could have been done. By, and by people in your area and I'm not, I don't.
We're not gonna put the blame on.
I'm not putting blame on anybody, I'm just simply saying it expired in twenty eighteen. Here it is, twenty twenty one, and we missed out on all the revenue from Medicaid all that time. And that's all I'm gonna say at this point, I'm not blaming anyone, but if the billing were done properly, there'd be more revenue, period.
Probably if we would have had somebody that was actually a full-time person take care of all that stuff.
Well, that's a matter of opinion, okay?
It was done before without a full-time person.
No, it was done, but who submitted it?
Who did?
The fire department. We, we've had this conversation.
Okay, I'm not gonna, I'm just gonna let it go with that.
You went down the road, so what's the difference?
Yeah.
It was done before without a full-time person and now it's not being done.
And the Medicare came up at the same time and, and actually the hospital. And my wife Debbie and another person did all that. And they told them that it was gonna be, that the Medicaid part was gonna be coming up soon too, and I guess it just kinda got left behind. The notification never came to us, I guarantee you that.
Fire department stopped doing it.
Yeah.
That's how, that's what happened.
Yeah, and the note, we didn't get a notification it was due either.
But the fire department was doing it without getting paid.
Yeah.
And now they want to get paid.
And I doubt very much that Sharp, who's doing our billing, hasn't mentioned it all along.
Oh, they did.
Or Remza.
And they didn't call us, I have an email who they did call.
Well.
So we don't wanna go there either. But anyhow, so we're, we're doing the training for the fire department, equipment's good, firefighter one. We're doing fire inspections, if you wanna get a report from Mike on that and Grant. We, as the fire department, bought a set of first electric tools. So we saved them, we didn't ask the county for that money, the, we've put on. Sold tickets and, and did raffles and stuff to earn enough money to buy that, and we paid for that for ourselves to upgrade our equipment at the firehouse, so just so you know.
And you had a training.
For that ourselves.
You had a training exercise just recently.
Yeah, so we trained on it and, and, and we're gonna be putting them in service in the next week or so, so. Anyhow, twenty five thousand dollars that we donated of our own money to upgrade some equipment in the firehouse, just to let them in. And I guess that's about all I have.
And you had firefighter one testing?
We did testing last, last week, like two weeks ago.
And you, how long for the results or?
We've got the results back, out of the eight that took it, we had two passed.
Okay.
And Mike, do you have anything?
I guess he does. Not, not really, it's not a very good connection where I'm at right now, we're continuing on all the inspections. I think you and I probably need to go meet with the city since we're doing stuff inside the city limits. And then the only other thing that I, I have, I'd like to see which of the current fire codes that we've adopted. I know the city has, is old and I didn't really look at what the county is, but I'd like to see us make a move to adopting the two thousand eighteen. Um, fire code if we have not, is that's the state standard.
What year was that, Mike? Did you say two thousand eighteen?
Yes, that's the current one that is the standard in the state right now.
Thank you.
So that's something we need to get on the agenda for.
We, we need to talk to James, I think that he have adopted that.
Is that part of the building code and everything?
Yeah, I, I think you probably have, I just, I, I have not looked at it personally, but I did look at the city one, I think the county has adopted the two thousand eighteen. I just wanted to bring that up so that we're apples to apples and we're, you know, cross bounding with city inspections and county inspections.
Okay.
If you get any emails, did you get the email essentially yesterday?
Yeah, and I'm gonna call the fire marshal and get some information on that, so we'll, I'll talk to you about, okay.
Do you want a motion on the? Or you're bringing up there?
We're not quite there.
Sorry.
Uh, we can skip, Grant is Sean on? No Sean, no Emily, no right patch. Okay, so we can go to a request for higher room rate for EMS conference in Provo, Utah.
Did you say the room rates a hundred and ten or?
A hundred and ten.
So I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
What's the city's contribution for the EMS coordinator?
Zero. Why? Because it's not the city's, it's a Persian County ambulance.
But the city pays that wage, we just reimburse the.
Yeah, they pay her way, she actually, so that is another thing that the, the city pays the, pays the wages and. And they, she actually works for the county.
So the EMS coordinator would just do ambulance? Nothing to do with fire?
No.
And how much does the EMS coordinator make now?
She makes five hundred dollars a month.
And the county reimburses seven thousand six hundred and thirty seven dollars a year.
Which is more, it sounds to me like we're paying the whole thing.
You are.
No, not if she makes five hundred and stuff.
Yeah, that's six thousand, that's six thousand a year.
She's gotta make more than that because they send us a, a bill and, you know, or a voucher over and that's what we pay. And it's been seven thousand six hundred and seventy seven for several years.
That hasn't changed since it started.
Is that for the two positions that, that they send for?
I have asked the EMS coordinator for some information and I would really like to see a report every month. That shows the number of ambulance calls, how many are in the county, how many are in the city, how many are on the, the highway. And just some basic information like that, which should be pretty simple to do.
So that's what I'm getting at, that the county's paying all of this because it's called the Persian County Ambulance Service. But it serves.
That's due to licenses.
But it serves, it serves Love Lock, Rodney, that's the point.
It serves on right hatch and it serves Interstate eighty all the way to.
Right, but it serves Love Lock, right?
Pardon?
It serves Love Lock, correct?
Yes.
So Love Lock should contribute.
We're the Love Lock Volunteer Fire Department and we were, and we actually take care of the county and the city, we have two separate budgets.
Right, but Love Lock does not contribute to the ambulance service for the EMS coordinator. But they probably should if it's going to be.
That's, sounds like something that you guys need to talk about at your regular meeting where you decide.
We also need some information, some data to go with that. So, you know, if we can get how many are on the highway, how many are in the county, how many are in the city? That's what we need and that's just part, I can't remember what the other things I asked.
And you've had that report here before.
Oh, yeah, I've had it before, but I mean, I could get that report, it's not a problem, I can print it out, you know, every ambulance call that we go on, then you can.
A monthly report would be good.
Yes, it would, and in writing, I mean, something that we can look at and go back to.
Okay, we can do that.
Okay, I appreciate it.
So you got, so the county, you're still on the thirty five, sixty five percent thing, right? Okay.
That's sure services for the fire.
Yeah, no. But I think we're paying the whole thing for.
Reimbursed.
Well, I know you pay everything on the ambulance. You have an ambulance budget plus you pay, and that seven thousand is actually in the annual budget.
Correct, and then there's reimbursement for yours.
Yeah.
In the fire.
In the fire department part of them. So then you guys split that one.
All right, so after our last meeting, did you get with Karen to work on the job description a little bit more?
No, I, I was fine with the way the job description was, it was, a couple of you have.
Okay, so, so you've got your input in and work.
I've already put mine in and, and once you guys get yours in and she typed for that thing, so email me a copy and then I'll be able to do it, but I didn't see any problem with it.
Okay.
So, and you guys do, so you need to work on that.
Okay, thank you.
Community Center.
Hello, welcome.
Thank you. My first meeting, so.
Be kind to you.
What can I do? How can I help?
How's it going in the community center?
I love it. I absolutely love it. You know how you finally found your job and thank yous are calling? After working for a living, you know, for.
So you're getting up to speed?
I think so, I think so. I booked a number of events, they're rather small, you know, like. Baby showers, seems like a lot of baby showers now, and now we are having the memorial.
On the thirteenth, yeah.
So we've locked up the twelfth. Um, also so that, um, we can get all four hundred chairs set up. So, um, been working with them quite a bit, trying to help them out. I think it's Jessica dealing with. Getting guidelines and offering information. That one, but.
Yeah.
I, I need to get some more learning on the invoicing, however, I know that's being handled.
Doing vouchers and stuff, you mean?
Um, has Heidi showed you?
Yes, she has, but I'm talking about the part that's being handled by.
By Rain.
Yeah.
And there's only like five or six that have.
Oh, okay.
So as soon as you're comfortable, you can come spend five minutes with me, I'll review the templates or email them to you. And then I'll take you over because they changed the combination on that post office box.
Okay.
And it's.
Oh, that's that weird one with.
That was the weird one, yeah.
Combination on it.
But with it, I was just trying to give you a little time to get settled, if you feel like you're ready, you go, you just let me know and I'll, I'll give you what I have.
Okay, yeah, there are some things I, I would like to double check on, we're doing this information fun because. It's mainly dealing with the, the big ones that come in constantly.
Yeah, Core Rochester.
Yeah, and Selica, New York Selica.
And you have regular hours, I believe you told me that.
I do, I have put, um, to be there from ten to two, Monday through Friday.
Good.
Um, there are, and, and it seems like more people are finding that out, I'm getting more phone calls.
Yes, that's great.
Which means more opportunities to keep that center busy.
Do you have a lot of holiday bookings?
You know what, I was looking at that and really, and that's why I brought the calendar with me. Um, December looks. Pretty good, I mean, I don't have hardly any, um.
Do you have American Legion as one?
I'm not sure I do, let me see. Yes, American Legion's on there, we have, um. On the eighteenth, it says full facility for a Christmas party, but I'm not sure who it means for. Um, we're gonna be having, but like I've got the eleventh wide open for Christmas. Um, and of course on the Sundays, we have a new one that's gonna come in and that is gonna be a Christmas centerpiece class.
Oh.
That's gonna be held on the twelfth.
Ooh.
So, yeah.
I hope they advertise that swat.
Like a four H one or what is?
This is Sarah.
Oh, Sarah, um.
Yes, yeah, she's gonna do that, see how it goes. Um, it's, she's using the seven troughs room, she's gonna try and limit it to fifteen people, but I think that she has a response. Um, like she did out at doing the Thanksgiving ones, she'll probably have to do two sessions, yeah, so.
That's awesome.
And then. But it's pretty quiet in December so far, we do have, um. The four H dance, we have the filters party. And then of course we have the craft fair, that's all in there and set. Let me see. American Legion, but really it's pretty quiet, I think maybe, I'm getting calls though.
Good.
Is what I'm getting.
All right, great. Well, we're glad you're here, thank you.
I'm enjoying it immensely.
I know you're.
I am enjoying, any questions?
Nope, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. What part of it?
Good morning, Steve.
How are you?
All right.
So we have a request to advertise higher administrative clerk, one or two. Uh, position due to upcoming retirement.
Yeah, Dixie's gonna retire, I think, first week of January. So that gets turned over, I'll probably, at this point, I'll be terminated at the end of December. Cause I refuse to let the government or my employer make my medical decisions for me.
Ooh, so what are you gonna go do?
I don't know, yeah.
Don't know.
Well, um, I know that you and R, they're doing, they want to convert all the administrative clerk positions to you and our positions. And so there's just a few remaining in some of the counties, so they actually want to do the hiring and everything for that. Um, just like they do for your position in the four H, so they need a copy of the letter.
That she's gonna read, yeah.
Yeah, that, so they can actually do something on that. And then the county does reimburse them, just like we do for the four H position, you know, it's.
So are you gonna be paying this person's salary?
Just like we do with the four H, yeah.
No, we don't, it won't be a Persian County employee.
No, it won't be, no, it'll be you and R.
University will send us a quarterly billing.
Yes.
And from a voucher.
Yeah, I didn't say it properly, but yes, that is how it's done.
I just caution, allow them to control the person when you're paying the bills.
Well, it's the same with the four H, you know, we pay the bill.
Yeah.
Well, isn't Colby, most of Colby's salary grant funded?
Uh, the SNAP, about twenty five percent.
And she's doing amazing job.
She had called them sick day, but yeah, just did, now they, stuff I can think of off the top of my head is, they had the barbecue a few weeks back and. That was sponsored, um, through the mines, a lot of eagle picturing, and I think they made about five thousand dollars of that. So that's a lot better than they would do at the frontier days like they used to do.
Yeah.
And, so they had a Halloween party last weekend, that was pretty good success, she said, and, uh, the SNAP has been expanding, working. Through the senior center and the schools and that, so that's keeping her pretty busy too. Right now I'm having pesticide training over there, um, through, uh, interactive videos, so I can get back to that. They're still keeping pretty busy over there.
Doing, she's doing a great job with four H, she's phenomenal.
Yes, she does.
Well, if the university is gonna hire this person, do I need to contact them or?
Yeah, and they need to, they need that letter, so they can.
Right.
Yeah.
We'll see what happens, but I don't know.
Yeah, well.
It could be six months where they hire someone.
Yeah. The easiest ones to work.
And the person's gonna be in the middle, it'd be cool because she'll be the only one there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so are you retiring then?
I'm a lone fireman.
Oh, yeah.
I got about two years, a year and a half to go. But, yeah.
Yeah, they have that mandate, don't they?
So we still have a, a, a request to advertise higher administrative clerk.
Yeah, I think that we just.
I'll make a motion that we do not do that, that it goes through you and R.
I have a second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Motion, Pat.
Thank you, Steve.
IT Department.
We know who you are.
But wasn't doing what I, what I wanted to do, um. So, over the last couple of weeks, I have been either packing to move or moving. So I am in the office at three forty Main Street now. Um. So I am in the office at 340 Main Street now. Um, just gotta get some storage and shelving and then I can finish unpacking all my stuff. Um.
So you need some shelving and?
Yeah, and it's, um, I've, I've got it all, all figured out. I just need to, I'm, I'm trying to work with, uh, Chris to get my new address into our Amazon account. So this heavy stuff doesn't get shipped to them and then I have to cart down the street. Um, but yeah, it's, yeah, in all, everything looking bad totals under a grand, so, which I have in my department's budget. Um, but yeah, it's, it's going well. Um, we had, due to the power bumps, we had a battery backup in the admin building, just.
Whether it went?
Yep, it was, it was an older one, so it was probably getting close to do, well, medium older, older than, it was, it was one that was getting ready to be replaced anyway. Um, not our, not our nice big main one that's in our server rack, but, uh, the one that runs the rack next to our enclosed server rack. Um, so I have, I have a replacement for that one on the way. Um, and that'll, that'll be here Monday. Um, so, uh, when I install it on Monday, there'll be, uh, some downtime at the admin building while I unplug things from the temporary battery backup that I have in there into the new battery backup. That will be the permanent thing. And thank you, Rain, for letting me steal your spare. Yeah. Um, we have, and I haven't had a chance to check if it's still ongoing as of this morning, uh, but we have a phone issue. Um, there are a good number of our phone lines that are not ringing through to offices. Um, there are, so like the, the DA's office is affected, a couple of lines in the district quarter are affected, but not all of them. Um, the assessor's office has lines that are affected, but again, not all of them. Um, they can all, uh, the, the inter-office intercom works for everybody. Um, and because it's not consistent, all the numbers are not working. That leads me to believe that it's on AT&amp;T's side. Uh, so I have a ticket open with them. Um, I talked to them yesterday and, um, once, one side of AT&amp;T says, said their stuff all looks fine, so they kicked it over to the circuit team to, to work on the circuits. Um, and I have not heard back from that team as of yet. So hopefully that'll be quick. And then, um, we are looking at do, on installing equipment for our new info, new phone system next week. Um, so when those, I, I, I still need to get some account numbers from some departments to begin the, the number reporting process. But we'll have, we'll have new phones on everybody's desks. They'll be able, they'll have temporary phone numbers in them. They'll, they'll have their actual extension numbers, but temporary public telephone numbers. So you will be able to make calls on them. They just won't be reporting as the normal county members until we finish the reporting process. Um, and then what'll happen, what'll happen there is once the number's poured over, automatically the old phones will stop ringing and the new phones will start.
So they'll have two phones on their desk.
For a little while, yeah. Um, we are also going to be, um, we're gonna be taking advantage of the Veterans Day holiday to, uh, do some, um, required, some maintenance that we need to do on networks. Um, that'll be, so it, it'll involve quite a bit of downtime, so, um, that's why we're taking, using the holiday to do it while everybody's gone. Won't be, won't impact their work. And that's all I have.
Okay.
Good job.
Seemed a little bit less stressed now that you're in your own place.
Um.
Not, not quite yet.
Not quite yet.
Not.
You still need to tell.
Progress is being made. We're, we're taking, we're, we're, we're actually moving forward, so that helps a lot. Seeing that we're, we're making progress. So, and I appreciate the work. All right.
Good, thank you. Economic Development.
Heidi is at the W N C C board retreat. She's not here today and um, I don't know if all of you know, but, uh, West Coast, San Antonio, Nevada, hold their first permit.
Oh, good.
So. For you, for us. It's about all, um, so far. Brownfield report she sent.
I, I would have to look, I probably, um, Barry and I both attended the I-95.
Oh, the.
Maybe, um, wait a minute, 95 I-80 futures. It was excellent. I'm, in my opinion.
It was, it was a good presentation.
Fantastic.
And Ralph did a good presentation, explained the process to everybody there.
Yeah, but it was, and it was equal with, you know, Humboldt and Pershing. We had a lot of, you know, our part two and the exhibitors and there were individuals there that actually, you know, build houses and finance that too, mortgage. There was so much, it was.
It was.
I can't speak enough.
Jan and Heidi worked really hard on putting.
They did a great job.
They're, they work together very very well.
Yeah.
And Ralph was going to be at Grass Valley, but his flight was delayed in Atlanta, and so he didn't make it. But Heidi will get him up there.
Okay, we have a public defender report.
Looks like just one new case. Yeah, which is amazing, or two, I guess. Yeah, two, sorry. Two new cases.
Oh, one at the bottom.
Yeah, I, I didn't see that at first.
Code enforcement.
I don't have an update.
You have an update. Could you relay a message?
The construction or destruction on Upper Valley Road stopped about a month and a half ago, and they haven't been back. No, that burned one. And that's probably something show.
Lacy Donaldson.
I have a new thing to report, but I did do two technical corrections this morning.
The formation of new partnerships. So if you're ready, I'll make a motion to approve the, the corrections changes to the tax rule as presented. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
My motion. Rain, you're up.
I just have a report.
Thank you, Rain, very much.
And I have my first week of auditors in a couple of weeks, so I'm hoping good news. You should be tallying stuff up during the next couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you, Rain.
Is Lori on?
Uh, she was not.
Looks like you're the next one.
Oh, we have, uh, we're set up for interviews tomorrow for the Deputy Public Guardian position. It's gonna be paid out of, of, uh, grant funding for the Frontier Community Coalition. Got two applicants. I wanna thank Karen for being willing to be on the panel. Who's gonna interview. Hopefully, we can get that person interviewed. Um, and I'm just wondering if there are other positions of need in the county that need to be filled, because I think there's still a lot of the Frontier Community Coalition.
They have to have direct contact with people.
Yeah.
Um, what about the library asked for somebody? What about the library to work the front desk or something?
Okay.
I, I mean, I'm just, and maybe part-time, not full-time. Um, I don't know what else.
One other thing we've talked about is a bus driver, it's interesting.
Okay.
Okay.
And that would be priority number one because, yeah. Who knows?
So my intent would be that the non-successful applicant for the DA's office, I would approach the other person and ask them if they were interested in maybe another position and that we would put it on the agenda.
Okay.
For the next, the next meeting, if that's all right.
Okay.
And then, uh, it's just then related, the DA's office's phones are down, so we're using our personal cell phones. So there could be some Russian mobsters on these calls that have my personal cell phone. Several people yesterday, so that'll be interesting to see what happens with that. Um, and that's pretty much all I have. The DA's office.
I have one to run by and I won't do it in the meeting, but, uh, it has to do with what, I'm thinking borderline elder abuse, so we'll deal with you.
Um, I, I do wanna say, it's probably more appropriate to make this observation when it's legal counsels, uh, but I'll just throw it out there. Um, you know, when the fire chief comes in and I respect what the ambulance service does and we respect what our volunteer firefighters do. We don't want to have an antipath, that antagonistic relationship with them, but at the same time, the county we need to make sure that we're exploring every available option. And it doesn't make a lot of sense to hire an EMS coordinator just jump in there and both leave without.
It does not.
Waters first, or at least taking the temperature and making sure that we're getting the best service for what we can pay for.
Right.
So, uh, you know, I think we need to have further conversations with Love Lock, see what their contribution might be. Because although the ambulance service is called Pershing County, it serves Love Lock and Love Lock. You know, they provide a building for it. But perhaps we need to see if there's something else they could do, especially if the, if the county's going to make a $85,000 or $95,000 commitment to this position that's only going to manage the ambulance service. That has nothing to do with firefight.
Has nothing to do with firefight.
So, I, I think that we, we still have some work to do on that. I, I'm hopeful that Rodney and the other volunteers understand that. They'll, they'll be patient as we go through this process.
You're working on the requests and proposals, though.
I am, I am, but it's not something that, so I'm uninitiated and ambulance services or firefighting, I'm just the voyeur. So I have to do a lot of research and I have to know a little bit about what I'm talking about. So then these proposals, so it's not something I just throw together over the course of, you know, a day. So I'll continue to work on it, but even after we ask for the proposals, those businesses, they're gonna need some time to put that together. It's probably gonna take them about 30 days or 45 days because they're gonna have, if they're serious about it, they're gonna have to find out what our needs are. Probably come out and do some walkarounds and they're gonna have to get some data, so.
Well, and that's why it's important that we know what number of calls we have, where they are basically.
Sure.
And some of that information, how many transports and, um, you know, how many calls we go on that, that we don't transport, you know, we just treated the scene or whatever and go from there. And those are the kinds of things I've been asking for and, and not really getting.
The EMS needs to also cooperate with our requests.
Well, and I should have sent them the undermined report too, but I am significantly offended that my office is being blamed for the ball being dropped on certain names. I was asked to help one time. It was never my office's job to do that function and we weren't notified that things had expired.
Well, and, I mean, we could go on and on about this, but just like I already said, there's no question that Sharp Billing has been telling them all along that it's expired. And if I can do, I'm not saying the application was perfect because I don't know yet and there's probably things they're gonna say that we need. But if I can do the application and then get assistance from, I got assistance from you, I got assistance from Sharp Billing, I had them look at it. I got assistance from, um, the hospital, from their billing people, just for them to look at it, make sure I had it, you know, as best we can.
Yeah.
And then, like I said, they will probably come back and say, well, you need this or something, but I expect that. If it were perfect, I would be amazed.
Okay, we're still under the District Attorney.
Yeah, sorry, okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. Uh, Judge Dean. No. Jerry Allen may be here later. I think he was working a shift. Uh, proclamation and awards, uh, we have one for Kevin Machado for 15 years. Kevin is not here. I will personally deliver that one myself.
Well, congratulations to him, 15 years. Wow. So only got 15 more to go.
Yeah. Uh, okay, so we're not up to 9:40 at Derby Field Airport. We had, you heard about fuel costs. Uh, we had an airport advisory boarding or meeting last week. You have something, anything to add since you're here?
Well, hey, as we discussed with the meeting, there are various options being considered. Upgrades. What?
Yeah.
And we've had, and time and time, people expressing interest in setting up an FBO operation with the earth or putting manure in. And the issue always comes down to water. Just wanted to make measures, you know, where, up in that situation. There's a requirement for water flow, fire flow, firefighting. And all that, and two inch, two inch length, I'm gonna do it.
No.
So, figures just kind of.
Yeah.
Where they are.
I thought you used foam to put out fires. Gas.
Oh, no, depends on the fire. You use water a lot. One would be if a building caught on fire. So, uh, I did send an email yesterday to Far West and advised them, because I think they know, but I don't know for sure. We do have that black water tank out there. Uh, I asked Chick Rose and he said it holds 5,000 gallons. So hopefully we could, uh, incorporate that into that water, water plant.
So where are they on their report, their engineering?
They're still working on it.
Okay, so we need that before we can make any decisions.
Why?
We need to have an idea of what the cost is gonna be.
An idea of the cost and we also have.
They're working on a design, uh, and, and an application to the safe water drinking people.
Oh, the EPA?
Yeah. Nah, it's not EPA.
Well, it's under.
It's another division.
It, it's under the EPA, but it's a safe water drinking standard thing, yeah.
Anyway, it's a report that has to be filed, uh, whenever you're gonna do a water main extension of that.
Isn't there funding through them, maybe?
Isn't what?
Can't we get, we could look for funding through that agency?
No, that's just a, it's like the, uh, I mean, not the water district, but it's not a funding organization. It's just one where they issue permits.
So did the committee review the hanger agreement at your last meeting?
We, we are reviewing it.
Okay.
That's a badly deal, so there again. These agreements that we named out quite a while ago. Refresh everybody, try to get it made now.
And they're going to review it and get it, get back to me if they have any comments and I'll get it with Bryce. One, one thing that happened before you got here was, um, we, we, you know, we got a load of fuel two weeks ago. Our cost is four twenty-eight, so that, uh, at, at the pump, it's going to be five oh five. Just hit. And, and we still, uh, do not have a new fuel dispenser, so that's, that's in the process. I think that delays, uh, we still got two more minutes.
Uh, how's gate working?
Uh, we had a bump last week and I think it, because it was during all those power outages. Uh, and I went out there Sunday and reset it and everything just fine since then. I, I, I sent the results and some pictures to, uh, the gate technician guy and he sent me back a a list of things to go look at. Our net's been working great. What can we do instead here? Do, are we going to have litigation in a while or?
Oh, yeah.
Maybe?
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll take two minutes.
Do you have a report from legal counsel?
I just, no.
No. Report from administrative assistant? I'm just sailing right through them here trying to get to nine forty. Correspondence? Okay. I'm going to go get a glass of water. Nine forty timed event. Uh, before I even go into it, do we want to delay this?
Yeah, um, we touched upon it when Dan was giving his report. Uh, like I said, we had a meeting last week. It was very productive and there's just some slight tweaks that needed to be made with that ordinance to make it easier for the assessor to implement and also to make it easier here for, uh, for the debt net software. So.
Double wait.
Yeah.
Update, uh, from emergency management related to the COVID nineteen, uh, list of proposed projects. We have that on the agenda for, I think, December first for prioritization. Anybody else have any comments? Diversion?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Do you have time to make a report?
Sure.
Yeah.
Sometimes on the corner of my time is
We don't want to hear that.
Somebody possibly hear, but it's reality.
Yeah.
And, uh, so we got ten inmates in custody. We just picked up two last night. It's pretty good. Um, and we just, uh, gave two conditional offers, offers to, to potential deputies there talking it over with their families to see if it's something they want to do. So, and I did get the, uh, report from the architect.
I did.
Got a stroke, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, that's what I did talk.
The, uh, architects about a new layout plan, but then also a, um, a cost analysis.
Yeah. So, uh, anyway, we'll look at that.
Yeah. So other than that, unless anybody's got any questions, uh, we're planning on hopefully opening the office starting next week as long as we have no more positive COVID cases. I think we're through that.
Yeah.
About it.
Good.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. So just, Giselle.
Did you have anything else you would like to report, ma'am?
Come on up here. Tell us how it's going in the senior center.
Good morning. It is going really good. We
We got our menu for November done, so we're trying to switch it up and then at the same time like leave one meal constant like during the weeks like they love our Kelly's hamburgers. They just, they love them and they're thick and juicy. So I think we're gonna put burgers in each week of like a Tuesday or Wednesday, just because they
So, so, but so you, you could note that these aren't just preformed patties that you buy. She actually buys hamburger and mix.
Yeah, she makes the patty. So we're looking to buy a press, presser, press.
Yeah.
That way she could just pre-make them and then leave them in the fridge and then just ready to go the next day or make them freeze them and then just pull them out and go for next week. So they're really liking our food.
Good.
Which is awesome. We did do the Halloween. Not a contest. We like, we got prizes for places one, two, and three last week. And a couple of them dressed up, so we got that just kind of to get them again going on prizes and stuff. We've been switching up their bingo too. I know the traditional way was like cookies. Now we give them a bunch of candy that we have left over. But other than that, we've been picking them up. They're enjoying like coming back to the senior center. Me and Larry and Penny have been talking about when the senior food truck comes once a month. Picking up the seniors that don't have transportation. Taking them to the food bank in the bus. And then bringing them to the senior center and get a couple of board games. Going for them to wait there instead of me picking them up, taking them to the food bank and then dropping them off and then picking them up again. So I talked to them a couple of times about it and they seem to like that idea, just like have their early coffee, you know, have the interaction with, or that like one-on-one with someone else and play board games while they wait for the meal. What else? We're working on the SAM's website today. So Gianna is due for a meeting tomorrow with Lori, which is our state gal. So all of the SAM's data is going to start being inputted tomorrow, just to get caught up on that stuff.
Did she talk with that lady so she could get the password?
They, yeah, they had a re, so for some reason that computer doesn't like that website, the second office. It's the state login and it keeps on getting her kicked out or doesn't let her in. And it's the same thing with Larry's email, that computer just, I don't know what it is, it doesn't like it. So they reset it. She has a training tomorrow to get all of the state data inputted and back on track.
Are you going to do a breakfast in November?
Yes.
Oh, did you?
Oh, okay. I didn't talk about the breakfast. Okay. So the breakfast we did for October, it was pancakes, eggs, bacon, and sausage. And we did get about twenty.
I'm gonna say twenty-five.
Twenty, twenty-five of them come in. So breakfast starts at seven thirty, seven from seven thirty AM to nine. And we pick them up at seven, the ones that don't have transportation. And they liked the breakfast. Even homebound, like their breakfast last slash brunch. So they really enjoyed that meal for November. I believe it's on the nineteenth. Which is the last Friday, just because of our Thanksgiving holiday week. And that one, it's gonna, you guys want to come in for breakfast? It's gonna be chilaquiles verdes with refried beans and scrambled eggs.
So I'm sorry, what name?
The night, I want to say it's the nineteenth, the last Friday.
Okay, seventeen.
The seventeen.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, it's, you're looking at December.
Twenty-four?
It's the nineteen.
No, it's the nineteenth of November.
I'm looking at December.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Cause the twenty-sixth.
You're trying to jump the gun.
Twenty-sixth is the day of Thanksgiving. You were trying to make us creepy more, but
Yeah.
But yeah, if you guys are interested in trying our chilaquiles, more than welcome to come, Karen.
I, I know what the rice and beans are, but what is the other?
So chilaquiles is a breakfast, so it's the way we do them is like you cut up corn tortillas into like triangles or squares. But because we can't deep fry, we put a little bit of oil and put them in the oven and you're like making tortilla chips. After that, you put it in the pan and then you pour a green, it could either be green or red salsa.
Okay.
I like mine spicy, but we don't want anyone to die on us, so we're gonna keep it as mild as we can. So you smother the tortillas with that salsa and then once you turn off the, the flame, you're gonna put queso fresco on top, like a bunch of queso fresco. You cover it and it'll melt, but not completely melt. It'll just like expand. So those are your chilaquiles. A lot of people like them with chicken or egg. I don't like them that way, so it goes a lot with refried beans and scrambled eggs. So that's what we're gonna have for breakfast. But other than that, that's, that's my report. Everything's running smoothly. We we're still waiting on Kelly's self
Yeah.
safe serve certification. And yeah, that's.
In the menus, we can get the menu at the senior center?
Yes, you can get the menu from the senior center or Karen has a copy of it.
Oh, okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for the report.
Your accountant knows?
Yeah.
Our end of month report. It was a little bit of a slow month, but that was such a bad thing.
Yeah, took a little bit?
A little bit. We will have a planning commission meeting tonight. There'll be a, there's a special use permit, home occupancy is special use permit for the city. And then a parcel map for the county.
West Coast and
they're great for their, yeah, for their ribs.
And two houses in Grass Valley, that's great.
And just to quickly address. And you got it, Shaylor guy, the email from an individual, yeah, an individual that, I'm talking with Bryce and we're gonna see how that can be addressed. There are, there are specific things that are in the development code that they have to provide and she doesn't like it, but that's, I was going by the development code. So Bryce and I will talk about that, see which direction.
They got it and I didn't. I said, they got it and I didn't?
I don't know.
It was CC to, to Carol, but it was Shaylor's first CC.
And I don't know why.
It was about easements off of Kyle House Spring.
Oh.
I'm forcing a portion of the developer code that, that makes them provide proof of an easement before the issuance of the bill.
Yeah.
So.
In the AMR?
Yeah, in, in AMR.
So Will, will you contact her or will you contact her?
Well, once, once Bryce and I have a chance to, so he, Bryce has a better understanding of where we're both coming from. Then either he can direct me, that I can respond to her or we'll, we'll figure something out.
Okay, so I will just reply to her email that she will get an email.
We're, we're speaking with legal counsel and
Yes, I will do that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I, I hope that addresses that. So
Yes.
You know, we just stopped by or if, if, if either one of you have any more questions, feel free to stop in now.
Okay, great.
I will.
And I'll forward it to Karen so she can send it to Larry so he's in.
Okay, yeah.
I don't know why I got it too.
Yeah, I, I don't know either. And I talked to our West Engineering on the on the Emily water tank. It's going to be considerably more expensive than what we initially expected, just it's gonna have a a quote won't, won't be exact probably by the, by the end of the week, first part of next week, but it's gonna be upwards of six hundred billion thousand.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's for the, that's for the tank. But once, once we start adding the tank, then well, two has never been able to well, two's never been really adequate to supply the system. So they're looking at ways to bring, because it's only a six and a half inch well, they're looking at ways to increase capacity out of that well. And then look at, look at well, one, our primary well. And either determine, because it's, it's been in the ground or it's been in that pit for over twenty years and either whether it needs to be replaced or they can put a new motor on it and let it, let it go and then consult with a well driller and do whatever for the, with a casing and, and maybe just rehab a little bit of well one and well two. And for, for three hundred and fifty, so that'll get you probably just the tank. This is the cost of everything else, it says just tripled.
Oh, yeah.
For, for that stuff. So I just want to let you know that it, it's gonna be a lot more expensive than, than what we initially thought.
Okay. Good.
Um, do we have more people moving into Emily?
Not right now.
We're not right now. So there's nothing in grids yet.
There, we've had, there, there was one manufacturing home permit and that's the one, the only one we've had within the last year.
Okay.
But the concern is about the existing tank failing.
Yeah, that, well, we have to do something with the, the existing tank. And then the addition of an additional tank, whether it be the same, about the same size or a two hundred thousand to a fifty thousand gallon tank. And then once you start with that, then does well one happen enough? Is the output of that well enough?
To fill the tank?
To fill, fill two and run, run them simultaneously. And they were also looking at any equipment to where we can, we might be able to operate a little bit more remotely where we can switch well one, well two, so we're not wasting time, come sampling time. Where you have to spend four hours up there running well two before you can take your samples. So that, that's just different stuff that they were, were looking at, but main thing I just wanted to let you know is that the cost is going to be a lot. If, if that's a direction, once we get the, once I get the quote, I'll, I'll get it on the agenda. Okay, then you guys can decide which direction. I don't have anything else on that unless you guys do.
We have.
It's, you, you cut out if you'd like.
We got monthly billing permits, we have that.
Hello. If you could introduce yourself for the The number hasn't changed.
Just power, power slider.
Good morning for the record.
Good morning.
Good morning, Cynthia Ballbar, West End Tech Consulting. I'm here to talk to you about the Prussian County Master Plan, I think. As you folks know, I have a contract to, so it just goes through the master plan itself, so we give it a cursory polishing, making sure there's no new issues, no new concerns about any one of the elements. Getting you a fresh look and then first updating social demographics. So the formula that kind of comes in the development. And so what I have for you today is about nineteen slides. And what I want to do is just go through each of the elements. And I have listed out for you all of the goals in each element. I just want to run through and make sure that there aren't any new goals that we need to add or goals that we want to remove. And I kind of want to get a sense from you all, you know, about I mean, obviously we kind of lost twenty months of COVID, but you know, are there a lot of requests for Master Plan and land use changes? You know, are they the same kinds of requests? I would imagine that they are going from sort of agricultural in nature to something more intense in nature. So we want to think about if there are things that are repeatedly occurring. You know, since the master plan was adopted nine years ago, ten years ago now, that we want to look at. And if there's not, anything will end up alone, but I just wanted to have that larger conversation. So in your Prussian County Master Plan today, these are the various elements that you have. We obviously have an introduction section where we'll talk about the overall community visions and what the guiding principles are, what the county sort of lists by in terms of the current uses, growth projections and development patterns. Under the context of planning, that's where we have a lot of the information now to do social demographics and changes of the time. As well as all of that background material, such as your coffee, where springs are on your roadmap, the you know, the information that the community can look to, to see where do I live in relation to these natural I use in the growth coordination, that chapter is, and these next four chapters are the ones that actually have policies associated with in that overview. So it's really going through, we have a set of land use classifications in the county. And within each and every one of those, we have the ability to do certain types of things, block sizes and things like that are controlled. But there are policies in there that guide the development of growth in the community. And we have to just look through and make sure that they're actually still relevant today too. Transportation, obviously it's all part of your roadway and public services and facilities, that's to do with your water, stormwater, sanitary and personal information facilities, such as those confirmation, natural resources. That's really geared towards protecting and preserving agricultural land and then that balance between promoting development, but preserving the rural character. So that's all about conserving natural resources. And then the implementation section, many appendix itself is all about historic properties that you have in, in the county. So the first thing we're going to do is to visit your vision. So this vision was established, you know, ten months ago, ten years ago, excuse me. And, and it's pretty long. And I've written it out for you right here. I, I would say that while the vision itself everything about it is perfectly fine. It doesn't necessarily sort of get to something concrete, you know, something in a concrete manner. I mean, you, you all were here ten years ago when this vision was established. Sorry, you look very familiar, but I recognize you on the county commission then. But that being said, I, I think it would be really helpful if you all sort of digested what this vision is and we don't have to talk about it today, but I want you to really think about this and whether or not we want to change it because of things that are going on in your community. Or things that, or activities in your community that you would like to take with. I don't want to be the one to tell you that at the end of the day, you want to compromise, you know, your agricultural preservation goal with trying to promote new development, but I think every community wants to promote growth and development. It's a question of that balance. And so the, the wording in here is fine, but in my mind, it's not it's not punching up almost, you know. Something I think we can, we can totally work on. So these are guiding principles. So these are contained in the introduction chapter of the master plan. And so preserving agricultural land is number one, retaining that county rural character, fostering economic development, coordinating growth and service provision, promoting positive fiscal impacts, managing land use, providing efficient public services, enhancing immigration opportunities, protecting water resources, and preserving historical resources. And those are all terrific. The question though is are you, in your own means, you know, happy with all these? Are there some words we want to change, or more importantly, are you sending the messages that you want to send to not only your residents, but to potential developers? Might be looking at accounting for investment. If it were me, and I were a developer coming in from out of the area, which they always are, preserving agricultural land sounds like an immediate barrier to somebody from outside the area. I'm not saying that you don't want to still have that as a guiding principle, but maybe it shouldn't be your number one. And maybe it is just kind of reordering those that we have in this list, but these are how they're listed in your document today. You know, retaining rural character. All of those messages are really important for your community because you have a beautiful rural community. But.
But it says we don't want to grow.
It sort of sends that message to me. And I can say that because I come from media, you know, where everything's going crazy. And everything's going crazy infernally. You know, I mean, I haven't, this is my first meeting I've had with human beings in 22 months. In fact, I tell my team, I'm having a meeting today. I had to iron my shirt. So, you know, for me to drive that, first of all, it was magnificently beautiful during the winter. Because there was that low thick fog over the Trucking River, and the cottonwoods were just ablaze and golden on, and it was just beautiful. But I haven't been past for a long time, and the number of warehouses that are online. And you're 55 miles from there. I mean, you are the next turnway, for lack of a better description. Not that I'm liking you, but the point is, is that I haven't been here in a very long time, and yet, when I drive down Main Street, and we drove around because I got here early, a lot of it doesn't feel any different than the last time this year. And that's certainly not the best thing to me. And so if you want me to reorder these, or if you want to change them, by all means, let's do that. But I don't want to reorder them, or finesse the wording, if you will, unless that's a directive that you would like to take. I do understand the population here, and the sentiment here, and the willingness and the desire to maintain sort of this rural cultural care. But when developers send out folks that are looking to invest, you know, they pick these documents up and they take them seriously. And another thing, you know, when Tesla came to the region looking for investment, and this is before even told anybody they were here, they weren't here yet, they sent spies. And they met with Washoe County, and they met with the Sparks, and then they met with Dean Haymore and Story County. And everybody had a sense that, I wonder if this comes from Tesla. But the gentleman didn't announce themselves as being a representative of Tesla. And I don't know if you know Dean Haymore.
Oh, very well.
Yes. He's probably shared with you the story then, that when they sat across from him at his desk, and they said, we need a grading permit.
How soon can I get it? Here you go. You got it.
18 million cubic yard, I mean, and that's the point. They didn't have all the infrastructure in place. They didn't have anything in place to speak of. But they had a willingness to work with the development. I mean, in the case of now, it was. The point is, is that if you as a community want to embrace the future, then you need to be thinking about those kinds of activities that inspire and encourage people to come. And so reordering these principles might be something we should consider.
So do we have a copy of this slide that we could send to Heidi too? Okay.
Yeah, you have it. You have it on the screen.
Yeah, but I'm electronically.
And James. Perhaps. Okay, next slide. So so in the context of planning chapter, these are all the topics that are covered. And like I mentioned, it's pretty much, you know, mapping associated with all of these various pieces of information, the topography, hydrology, soils. And then, of course, the big one in that chapter is the demographic changes. And I have, I have a couple of demographic slides for you today, but I've downloaded all of the information from the census. This 2020 census is not being released due to COVID. So the latest information I can update you and the community on the master plan is 2019. So we'll be looking at the changes from 2010 to 2019. And that will cover all of associate demographics, as well as the housing characteristics. I can tell you, I had downloaded a lot, I had downloaded the slides and initiated the demographics. I'll just maybe a month ago, two months, maybe a month ago. And it was 2018. Now I went to the website to look at something, you had already updated it to 2019. And just looking at the difference between the number of jobs in 2018 and 2019, it was a decrease. Now, it was small, but it was a decrease. And I think that's what we're going to see between 2010 and 2019, so we're going to see decreases in a lot of the county related to jobs and that's it. Next slide. So this is, I uploaded all of the mapping in the master plan. So we've created a new layout, a new template, a new look. And one thing that I'm pretty fussy about is I like everything to have the exact same look and feel. Whereas the master plan graphics, they had a feel like they were created by different people, or updated by different people. And so I've standardized it, and everything looks exactly the same. And so this is just what our new geography map looks like, this side. And then your roadway network. Next slide. And then your hydrology and spring locations. And this is where all of the all of the hydrological basins are. And then I've had it screened back on the side, so that you can really see that they are continuation, so the same hydrographic basin. Next slide. Your mineral resources and where they are in relation to your populated areas. Next slide. And then, of course, your plant managers. Now, this one, I created them all for all of the various communities, the developed areas, they're already created, but I didn't bring them today. But the one thing I wanted to point out, and I've had a conversation with James about this, is that you'll see on this map, there's a couple of areas that are black. And they're black because they have no zoning. And neither one of us can figure out why that is.
They have no what?
No zoning.
Oh, no zoning, okay.
No zoning.
Oh, I see.
There's no record. And it's not like it's an insignificant number of parcels. And it's, and I can't tell because of the data that I have access to, if they're privately held or publicly owned. My guess is, is that they're probably publicly owned. But the notes in the file from, that I received from Far West, it's annotated in the attribute file that says that there's insufficient information, or there's just not enough information in order to determine what it should be. And so I'm just calling this out because I can't do anything about it. But I do think that it should be that you as the county entity should know, and also give you the total number of parcels and the number of acres that it totals up to. And I don't know how you go about resolving that.
Have you ran into this at all? You know, some of that black area looks like the backside of Ripe Patch.
Yes.
And then, I mean, there are several places out there.
Oh, I have not run into any that don't have a specific site.
Yeah.
So, yeah, this was all when we were emailing back and forth. It was new. It was new to me. I'd never heard of it.
Yeah.
Right. And I'm only calling it out because at this point, between Far West and myself and James, it's clear in the records that there's insufficient information. And a lot of it might be like just parcel closures or whatever, meaning that the parcel itself is in question, and therefore the zoning is in question. And I'm not saying it's something to be concerned about, I'm just saying I have an obligation to note it as such on the master plan. Next slide. So in the context for planning, there's a tool in the US Census, it's called On the Map. It's pretty cool. And I've been using it for quite a few years now. I it allows you to upload a geography into the census database, and then it aggregates information just to that geography. And so I uploaded the Purge County boundary. And what it does is it tells you, you know, within that geography, in this case, you know, where people, where they live, where they work, you know, what their wages are, how much they earn, what their next code sectors that they're employed in. And this is kind of visually shows you where the concentrations are, which is no surprise to you, which is Bass Valley and Love Lock and a little bit in Ripe Patch, but it shows you the concentrations of employment in the county, and where that is spatially. And I think if you click it. No, but like advanced, it's like you're advancing this slide, so, yeah. So this then shows you the breakdown of the employment in the next code sector as of 2019 in Purge County. And you can see that 20% of all jobs are in the mining quarry and oil extraction. And then the next big one is retail trade. And another one is accommodation and food services. So no surprise there, but it does take all of the employment and breaks it down by a number of jobs within each and every one of those next good sectors. Next slide. So then it gives you an option of tool to say, okay, if I live in Purge County, where, how far do I travel and where do I go to work if I'm not living and working in Purge County? And so this gives you an idea of the number of people and the proportion of the employed population, how far are they travel to work from Purge County. And you can see that, you know, less than 10 miles is a quarter of the working population, but more than half of the population travels greater than 50 miles. And up in the upper right, it's what we call a radar chart, and that gives you the magnitude in terms of the number, and then the distance. And so it shows you that the highest number of the employed population are traveling southwest to go to work. And in the map, it's showing you that they're going to Reno and Story County from here. Okay, next slide. And then this tool is called Info Outflow. And so interestingly enough, this is actually a really good outcome for Purge County in that you have this about the same number of people come into Purge County to work that don't live here as leave Purge County to go where elsewhere. So ideally, all the people living and working are in place, but it's better to have a balance between those that are commuting in and those that are commuting out, rather than having your entire population commuting out. So this is actually a really good outcome for Purge County, all things considered. Next slide.
But it shows that if we had more housing, that more amenities, there probably would be more people living here.
Yeah, well.
Coming instead of traveling outside.
These are people who travel outside to go to work. So what it shows is, is if you had more employment opportunities, more people wouldn't leave. So the arrow that has 946 people leaving, that number would be smaller. So what it says on the map is that 723 of the employed population actually live and work in Purge County. And a slightly higher number leave the county to go to work, and a slightly lower number come into the county to work. But when you cross them over in that Venn diagram, the nice thing is, is that it's really balanced in terms of, you have 850 versus 940, 852 versus 946. In lots of communities, you'll have the number of people leaving the area to go work elsewhere. Because what happens is when they leave the area, all of that financial expenditure on, you know, coffee, or lunch, or something, or after-work activities, that gets spent in the area where they work, for the most part.
This is really good information.
Okay, next slide. So what we're going to do now is we're just going to go through the four chapters of the master plan that actually have goals and policies. And the first one is your land use and growth coordination. And we have five policies. And the first one is to maintain agriculture as a viable long-term, ready-to-use in the Love Lock area. Foster development in areas where adequate public services and facilities can be provided efficiently. And so that one right there says, number two, specifically says that as somebody who's interested in our area, we as a county are not necessarily interested in extending infrastructure to accommodate new development. That's what that new policy says. Achieving a balance of mixed, mix of land uses that are arranged to avoid conflicts and maximize public service and facility efficiencies. So that says that you want to have a balance of land uses, but you don't want to have any land uses that are adjacent to each other that would generate conflict. So that would be an industrial and a commercial type use, or heavy industrial, or even light industrial, proximate to any residential, residential use zone uses. That's what that says. Land use four, to retain or enhance the aesthetic value of Purge County's natural and built environment. And five, to encourage the development of a variety of housing types for community residents. And so I guess my question going back, you know, do you see a variety of housing types coming into Purge County? What, you see predominantly single-family detached and mobile homes?
Yes.
Okay. And in the city of Love Lock, what do they see for the most part? Are they seeing mixed use?
Nothing.
Are they seeing, okay. So I would say as far as the policy goes, then land use 5.0 probably isn't really that germane to the county. And if goals and policies really don't reflect the community sentiment and the activity that's going on here, we might as well not. We might as well focus our goals and policies on things and activities and values that we perceive as important, and we can act on. And we can, you know, make progress on. You know, retaining, enhancing the aesthetic value and character of the natural and built environment. You know, that's really a standard of the land use policy. I mean, it's nice. It's not saying that we don't it's basically saying that at the end of the day, we value our rural lifestyle. And when you have a master plan amendment, let's say to change agriculture to industrial, for the sake of discussion, it would be, it would be difficult for James to say that that request is consistent with land use policy 4.0. Because anybody from the public could argue that a big huge box warehouse is not an aesthetically pleasing development. I mean, they're not. But if you have the right development code requirements to force the building to change its plane every certain distance, as opposed to a huge big long box, or and use no plant material, elevation changes and things like that in the development code, you can make it more self-appealing. But land use 4.0 makes it difficult by itself in order to facilitate that.
It looks like we need to rewrite all of those.
Yes.
Well, it's a question for you all.
Yeah.
If that's, if that's really what you want, then if you really want to promote Then if you really want to promote, um, the growth and expansion of. These. Um, you know, when, with, I'll share a little story. When. Apple came to Marshall County, we were, I was there consultant. And interestingly enough, you know, it was in the city of Sparks's sphere of influence at the time. And so Sparks had a, like a, an arm around all of that land out there. And the city of. Said, and this was to their detriment, that their fire. And police requirements, when you're in incorporated city, would have required the, the Apple data center campus. To build all sorts of new infrastructure. You know, for a fire station and ultimately they will be building one of those, but the city's. Development standards were so high for this. Specific use because data centers at the time were pretty new and definitely not reflected in development codes. In a, you know, list of, you know, applicable uses. Ten years ago, never even heard of those. Now they're everywhere. Point being is that Sparks, instead of relaxing their requirements. And saying, no, we're not going to require all of this infrastructure out of this one project. So we will allow the county, we will roll back our, um, territorial boundary. And we'll let it all be in the county because the county has relaxed standards. Well, that was hugely foolish on the Spark part of City of Sparks. Because at the time, Apple just wanted to buy four hundred and twenty-five acres, which they did. And then they ultimately bought all two thousand acres and they expanded that campus and all of that revenue goes to the county now. And so. There's really. And I'm not saying this necessarily applies to you, I'm saying, want to think about that. You know, there's a really fine line between recognizing what is appropriate for the development. And what is onerous for the development. And nobody wants to be on the wrong side of onerous. And in this case, Sparks could not back off on what they wanted or felt that they needed. Even though there's not a whole lot of employees out there. But they generate a term.
Yeah.
Because of what they do there. Um, and, you know, and, and they have a lot of power there. Because apparently, and it's on a double and triple generating system, you know, with substitution backups that feed. Because the amount of money that they generate every minute is so huge that they cannot afford to not be operating at every.
Yeah, they have that huge solar array.
Right. And so that was turquoise solar. They, who did all their planning and entitlements for them too. And so they ultimately bought five hundred and sixty acres from the original property owner. And they're doing, you know, a hundred megawatts of solar there that Apple is buying carefully from them. And so it's, it's just being aware that there are uses that do require a lot of power. And in that case, it do require a lot of water. But they're able to recycle the water and they're including that all the time. You know, when we first started working with Apple, they could recycle the water like ten times before it was called industrial waste. And then in order to get rid of industrial waste, according to Nevada Department of Environmental Protection. You have to put it on plants. You have to, you irrigate it. You can't just put it on the ground. They want it to be, um, absorbed into the roof structure. Plan to, because it is called industrial waste, even though it's drinking water quality, the state calls it that. That being said, it's, you know, don't succumb to the fear that it's a water, you know, demanding kind of a use. In that it is, but they recycle so much of it that they're really not using all that much water at the end of the day. And so it is something that's really valuable in any growing community is, is the ability to recognize. You know, what's going to work and where and can we accommodate these kinds of newer uses without too much trouble? Either in our master plan or in our development code. Um, do you all have opportunity zones here?
No.
Do we have?
Opportunity zones?
Oh, no.
Um, okay, well, save that conversation for next time. So opportunity zones, just really quickly, they are areas that have a lower income level. And they were defa, they were permitted by the state. And, and Austin, it was a federal mandate, but states decided. And county governments decided throughout Nevada to define areas that were under. Um, underfunded because the people who live there are, are lower income and they want to generate. Taxable uses in an area. And so it's up to the counties to decide where they are. And then they're eligible for this. And I can't really speak too intelligently about it, but it is. A, a funding program that allows them to defer taxes, not to the county, but. They move money around in a way between the financing piece of, of the development community. So it doesn't come down here or to Persian County where you're not getting a taxable income. It's, it's how they finance it up here between them. And they are being used all across the United States to try and. Redevelop underdeveloped property. And because there's a taxable incentive to do so, that's why the development community is interested. Because they can get taxable sort of. Release obligations or whatever the case might be. Um, that being said, we should probably look at that for you. Because it is an opportunity that a lot of the counties around here have taken advantage of. Line County in particular has a huge one. Um, just on the backside of Tesla, between US fifty and, you know, Story Counties from Big Factory. That area in there where they have a lot of five and ten acre parcels. And they have other kinds of land uses there. They designated that whole area as an opportunity zone. And the idea being is that it's one more step that you can make available to the development community to entice them to come. But there are certain sort of development ratios and income requirements which ensure we wouldn't have any trouble meeting. Next slide. Okay, sorry, there's a couple more. Um, land use, conservative rehabilitation, existing housing stock? Um, is that something you really want to do?
Well, and what it says is we don't want any new.
Pretty much.
Yeah.
Right. Right. Um, so I would say number six could probably be struck.
Yeah.
Um, expand local employment opportunities, particularly jobs that pay living wages. And retain historic and cultural resources as physical reminders of the county's past. Integrate the county's identity now and in the future. Um, certainly you want to retain historical and cultural resources. I guess the question is, how many cultural and historical resources are you willing to save? And if there's people who remember sitting in. Are there a lot of them?
There are just a few. There are just a few. Yeah. It's not that big of a thing.
So, and I know we have them in appendix A. So maybe what we can do is revise this one to water it down just a little bit. And add all, make sure that all of them that you want to save are listed in that appendix A. Next slide. So our transportation, um, these are pretty, um, standard, important. You know, maintaining your transportation system that safely and efficiently meets the needs of residents and businesses. Um, provides adequate right-of-way and facility improvements to serve development and maintain acceptable levels of service. My question to you is, do you ever have any requests by the community to. Build roadways that are narrow or they need railway standards?
No.
No.
Okay. Do you, I can't remember what your railway standards are, but I'm assuming they're fairly typical N dot kind of for highway arterial primary. Local, okay. Your local was minimum twenty-four feet?
Thirty feet at the lower level. Fifteen, I'd say.
Okay. That's pretty big.
It is.
They have a lot of farm equipment.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Um, the only reason I ask is. You know, maintaining all that extra pavement is exceedingly expensive. And so maybe one thing to look at is. Limiting. Reducing your right-of-way slightly in residential neighborhoods that wouldn't have any farm equipment. So it's just giving you the option because the thirty-foot roadway section is really huge. And it's not so huge. It's not saying that big isn't bad, but it is from a financial maintenance perspective. It's really bad for county government to maintain excess pavement that you don't need. And I can understand needing larger equipment on your major roadway network. But I could see that you could reduce your right-of-way in residential neighborhoods to twenty-four feet. Or whatever the minimum width for your fire truck is.
We don't have a lot of residential areas that are, that are paved in the county. And, and those that are residential that are paved in the county, it would almost be impossible to reduce it because they're all along fields. Follow what I'm saying?
I know. So those, those are along fields.
Yeah, that would apply here in Love Lock and also in Grass Valley area.
Right, okay. Uh, it's just something to think about.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, and then number four, support effective use and development of rail and aviation transportation facilities. Um, have you? I know when I was here last time, um, there was plans for the year four, and you started talking about it earlier. Um, you know, other than the water demands that are needed in order to fulfill new development on the year four, has much taken place out there in the past?
Not really, because it, I mean, we've done some groundwork to make, uh, ready places for hangars. We've had requests from outside, uh, people talking about putting in a hanger. And it all usually comes down to water.
Okay. And is there any hope or pulling in? Or is the, what the, what the, well, those folks are working. Far West is working for Inlay, so that's not going to affect them.
Far West is deciding.
The water system.
A, a water system. Uh, from the airport and they want to tie it into Westfall. Mainline, it is eight-inch line or a ten-inch line for Westfall.
Eight inch.
Okay.
To the airport.
Okay.
That, that's something that's going to be about what? Four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Four hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand, depending on.
Develop that.
Right.
But we have to prioritize, we're using COVID funds to do that. So the board is trying to prioritize the needs and wants of the county.
Okay.
There's more ones. And there are.
Same as in my house.
Also, um, it talks about rail. We have a spur here.
Mm-hmm. And so that was my next question. So has any discussion or any activity taken place? With regards to optimizing that rail spur?
Economic development is trying to work on that.
What, do you know what any of the impotence are or are there any impotence?
Um, I don't, offhand, I can put you in contact with Heidi and she could let you know.
Okay, is that for the, that's going to be a copy?
Yeah.
Yeah. I should probably talk to her. Um, because we certainly want to make sure our policies are consistent. But below these policies, this, below these goals are policies. And so I want to just make sure I address what's happening there in one of the policies.
So all of the, well, the big section of the county's industrial property is alongside of the rail spur. So in terms of optimizing that, that's what the county has done. They placed their big zone. Areas industrial on that rail spur. The issue is just getting industrial businesses to come in. Take advantage of the rail spur.
I, I know of one business right now that, um, I put in contact is Heidi. They are currently out there, but because of. Um, some issues within the energy. Um, and power out there, they're about ready to pack up and to just outside Sparks. So hopefully, Heidi can. Get somebody in the energy to help.
Yeah, we, we're going to have to talk about with that energy, the public services and facilities, but. Um, has, I mean, because one thing, if you don't already know Sparks. So interestingly, so that area that was. Apple, where Apple sat originally. So all of that land to the east of where Apple is. To USC Parkway. The city of Sparks is looking at expanding all of that area as a future industrial park. Now they've got significant topographic challenges and things like that, but. There is an interest in the larger community, particularly the state, into reconditioning. Um, USC Parkway, where currently intersected by eighty, and taking it north and west up to Sparks. And then connect Sparks to Lenabali.
Yeah.
That road, that road, that alignment, we think, we, we are, I was involved in that, that section. From Spengens to North Valley, but. But that whole loop road, you know, that then takes a whole, brings into the marketplace a whole nother hundred thousand plus acres. But not all of that is developable, but that just makes it a little bit harder for all those interests to move further to the east. So working with folks like that, that energy, you know, is, is hard and diligent as you can to get the power here. Will only help, you know, in the long run to get more development. Next slide. So public services and facilities, um, provide those public services and facilities at levels which can support a desirable quality of life for residents. Um, I think we probably want to think about changing that to promote new economic development. Um, organized planning and funding and construction, infrastructure facilities, supplying. Uh, balance the demand for expanding urban development with efficient provision of public services. Fine. You should figure out water, wastewater and stormwater systems are adequate to meet basic emergency needs and development. Protect public and private property from flood damage. Um, that one. Um, now how are we going to do that? Right. That sounds like not one moment. Um, obviously, in your development code, you, any new development would be required to demonstrate where they are. Whether they're in a flood zone or not, as we think of flood zone. But what, what has happened a lot in our community is. A development will come in. And they may or may not be on the fringe of a flood zone, or they may be right in a flood zone. And so what they do is they just raise it up, right? So they raise it up to necessary two or three feet and then they pop whatever. What I have in my mind is, that's been really controversial, is self-storage facility. Well, they raised it up two or three feet. And so their property gets protected. And then we had a massive rainstorm event. And it was so big that the water was coming out of the storm drains. I mean, I mean, out of the sewers rather than lifting the sewer manholes up. But it downstream flooded residential neighborhoods significantly. And lots and lots of people were really, really harmed. And so. We need to re, we need to rethink this one in particular with respect to the development code. I mean, we probably want to reword it a little bit, but in the development code is where we want to make sure that. You're protecting everybody, that the applicant themselves are looking at the downstream effects of new development. Because what they always want to do is just look at their current site. And once they, oh, they, once you elevate their site, unfortunately, what happens is, is the water. You know, hits that site and it goes around and it just finds the path of the stream system. In my own neighborhood, when we had the floods of, not the floods in ninety-two, but like two thousand and two or something. The water, when it overtopped all the ditches that run through, you know, in Sparks. The water overtopped all the ditches and it came flooding across like. Golf courses and everything. And literally in my own little tiny neighborhood, which is, we're a little private neighborhood. We don't have stream curves or anything. But it hit my neighbor's house smack center and like twenty thousand feet per second was going around his house. And someone was going restriction and the rest was going towards my house. And it was just going to fill it all the way up, but. Uh, we were, I mean, I was knee-deep, I was almost waist-deep in my own neighborhood and it was just from ditch water. And, and the point is, is like, you can't control where it's going to go, but if you're higher and something else is all around you, it's definitely going to break. it's definitely gonna break there and go around and it's gonna find somebody else.
Well, it's interesting, you must be Hidden Valley out that way.
Actually, no.
No?
No, my sister's in Hidden Valley, am I right? But I'm over there off of Manzanita and Lakeside.
Oh, up there.
By the golf course.
Yeah.
And we live in a little tiny old neighborhood, and my husband says, oh, my gosh, thank God we don't live in Rick's house. Uh, because the water was hitting his house full force and divert and splitting, and then that one has been out from this way, but.
One, one of the interesting things that just a little side thing, uh, Hidden Valley ended up with golf balls from Gran Zero Resort.
Oh, wow.
Because it filled it up so much.
Right.
It took the golf balls out and they ended up like two miles away.
Well, my, when we had the flood in ninety-two, my daddy lives in Hidden Valley, they were canoeing down the street.
Yep.
We couldn't even drive down in a truck. It was too deep. And, you know, luckily for him, you know, how the driveway goes like this, right there at that hinge point is exactly where the water stopped before it came into his house. So he was lucky, he was on the opposite side of the street than the golf course. So everybody on the golf course, they were all flooded.
Yeah.
We probably wanna look at five in particular as it affects the development code. Next slide. Should have a couple more. So number six, um, providing a variety of parks and recreation facilities for residents, do you guys do that?
We already have parks and recreation.
Yeah. We have the courthouse park.
We have the strip park, we have the softball.
Winter Park in Unionville.
Lions Park.
Yeah, Lions Park.
Okay, so that's a good one then, we keep that. Providing and adding cost-effective emergency services, including medical fire enforcement. Important, promote excellence and diversity in educational services and facilities. Um, I guess that would come up. I mean, I don't know when that might actually really come up, but it's still okay goal. Um, provide for safe and cost-effective solid waste management, which is important goal. My question relating to a water facility plan, do we need to include some sort of a this, a, a policy relating to the water? The delivery of water services now that you've adopted the water plan that's being incorporated into this master plan, which is the primary reason for updating it? Do they have any goals and policies in the water plan? That you recall? If so, I can just.
There were recommendations.
There are other recommendations. Policies, I don't think, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so generally speaking though, from a water perspective, I'm assuming that any new development is gonna be constrained by the water supply that you have, correct? Um, and do you have, just for my own notification, do you have? You have operating wells in the county that provide water services? Are you continuing to expand those wells? Have you had a need to expand those wells or drill new wells?
You mean for individual wells or for municipal?
Maybe for municipal.
So there's a GID that takes care of the water in Love Lock.
Okay.
And then there's a private water company that, um, provides a limited, uh, water service facility in Grass Valley, and then the rest are on private residential wells.
Okay, so new development in Grass Valley would be on individual wells?
Yes.
Unless they're in that one. That one area, right, okay. Um, so is there any need then for any policy related to water?
There, there probably is, and it's, it's something that we probably need to explore with the state engineer's office to work into an agreement with them.
Okay.
So, so there are a lot of large parcels in Grass Valley that are starting to be split, and we're concerned about the effect that's gonna have on the water basin.
In groundwater?
Yeah, the groundwater, so, um, I know that Humboldt County, they've entered into an agreement with, uh, state one, water engineer, that if you split a parcel and you split it to a certain amount, I don't know, a certain size, you have to provide a water right to do that, you have to acquire a water right in order to divide your parcel.
Right.
So that's something that, uh, well, that's something that, um, Washington, Humboldt County has, they've entered into an agreement to that effect with the state engineer house side of the state law.
Okay.
So.
And you guys haven't done any of that yet.
No, but we.
It, it needs to happen.
Absolutely, okay. Yes. Okay.
And we've been working with Chris from, uh, I can't remember his last name, from Far West to get us.
So while I'm not talking about subdivisions, the state law that requires that for some.
Right.
I'm talking about.
Just splitting.
Have a fifty acre parcel and you wanna, you know, carve off a little ten acre parcel under the state law, you would not provide a water right for that. Humboldt County, the agreement that they've entered into with the state engineers, they do.
In Washington County, definitely do.
Okay.
And don't we need a policy about moving water outside of the county too?
I think that's in our, in our water policy.
Yeah. We should probably put it here though, too. Because that's always a fight.
And I, and I think that's in our current master plan as well. That's why we always protest those applications.
Right.
Good one, we've seen far west few requests for subdividing large parcels and carving out small ones.
Yes.
In you Grass Valley.
Yeah, about every, about every planning commission meeting, there's at least one or two.
I wouldn't say, well, why the?
There's, there's probably ten a year.
Yeah.
Okay. But there's, there's gonna be more.
Yeah, yeah, there, yeah, there's gonna be.
So the board has commissioned Far West to conduct a stud, a study on that water basin.
Okay.
And so when Far West comes back and they say, look, this is way, way, way overperpetuated, and our recommendation is that you get to put a moratorium on the dividing of these parcels.
Without a water right.
Yeah, then the planning commission could start denying the applications, right now there's just not a factual basis to do so.
Okay, so next steps, um, so what I'm gonna do, my tasks are to update that demographic section and download all that data. I just need to sort of parse it all out and put in the presentation layout. Um, we need to finalize the policies, uh, that we've talked about today, so I'll work with James here and you know, I'll finesse some of them and give them some comments, and I would encourage you to give them your comments so that we can have a meaningful dialogue. And then I'm gonna have to work on chapter six, the implementation section with, with James, because there's a lot of information in there on implementing master plan. Understanding, I mean, I think I've gotten a lot today on settling what you're thinking in terms of where you wanna be and where you wanna go. And ultimately, you know, accommodating, I know, new growth for the future. Um, I'll work with him on some text and implementation section about that. And so, you know, where are we now? Um, I'll get him an initial draft of a master plan update before Christmas. And then what I'd like to do is after the holidays, settle down like the middle of January, have a stakeholder meeting about the development code. So we can talk about who we want to be there. And, and obviously people who are developing in your community or people who live in your community that you would want to participate in that. Um, as well as yourselves, you can talk about, I mean, that's gonna be kind of a, you know, development code is kind of a needy thing. And so we need to, you need to bring to me, these are the things that are not working, or these are the kinds of activities that we have challenges with. Or these are the kinds of things that are going on where we're having subdivisions. And not a legal subdivision, but a provision of land, smaller parcels, and we're not with one in the water right. Um, so we can talk and address those in the update. And then sometime in February, I'll have a whole outline of what those revisions are, and then I can have an initial draft in, in April.
So when it comes to the stakeholder meetings, we have those in several locations, like Love Lock and like Grass Valley at least.
Yes, absolutely. So what I would do, cuz those are the two, um, primary residential areas. The last time, long time ago, you know, we didn't get much turnout when we went out, when I went on the bi-patch area, but I did have plenty of people show up in Grass Valley. Um, and certainly Love Lock. Um, so what we can do is we have to figure out a location and then talk to those people, you know, in, by them. And we have to find a location, and I think we met, there's a place that they're a public building.
Yeah, they have, there's a, uh.
Like a community, yeah, a community, okay. And so we'll invite them to come, and I'll have all the chapters all out there, but it'll be an invitation for people to participate, and it'll be after work, you know, five o'clock. Eight o'clock or something, and people could drop in and provide comments on, you know, just if they tell me what they I don't want them to feel like it's an open invitation to, you know, paint a canvas, but this type of language in the development code and even in the master plan, you know, it's, it's, it's topics and, and, and content that isn't really well-understood by the general public, but if they give me an idea of challenges that they've had, whether it's new.
Whether they can mass produce hogs up there, remember that?
What, produce what?
Whether they can have a mass production hog farm.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
That was an issue that we, that was about ten years ago.
And is mass produced what?
Hogs.
Yes, yeah, that, now that's a fact. Um, yeah, that's very controversial. Um, and so if they give me an idea of what their challenges are, I can document that, and then we can figure out how best to leave that in at your discretion. You know, just because they say it, that doesn't mean it's, it's a significant change we wanna make, but it's something we wanna document as a concern, and we wanna try to find a way to, to ease the difficulty.
Well, and they might bring up something that we haven't thought of.
Absolutely, so. Okay, so any other questions for me?
Good job.
This is awesome, thank you. Very much.
Before you provide your draft, James, how should we, uh, provide feedback to you for this meeting about some of the policy changes that?
Directly to him, and then we will get together. Any comments that you have, any notes or things, any strike this, move this, this is a word I don't want. I mean, I have a sense now of what I would, I'll, I'll, I'll create a copy that's, you know, has some track changes. And I can provide that to James. Um, but I would, I would really appreciate hearing from you too before I finalize that. Um, even just from the policy perspective.
And, and for, oh, for any communications with, with her, so that nothing is lost in translation.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's nice to finally meet you.
Oh.
Have a face with the name, this is great.
Thank you, it's nice to be here. I was telling, um, my friends, uh, this morning when we were at the gym, I said, we know, um, I sent them, I was driving out here, and this was forever ago. Now, the first time that I updated, I took over from starting and did the development code and the master plan, finished it with the you know, Belinda forever ago, county attorney. Um, I said, you know, I, I, there was an agenda item on the, on the, um, there was an item on the agenda that was all about, cuz they said, well, I said, I haven't been up in such a long time, and my friends said, I should like tell them a dirty joke. And I said, well, I don't know any jokes, but I said, well, I, the last time I was here forever ago, um, there was an item on the agenda and the board was approving the cost to upgrade the stalls in the restroom in some building here, and, and I, and when I came up, my first comment was, well, I'm cheaper than a potty. So we had a little bit of a laugh.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
This is great. Oh, great, I'm glad that you're happy and we will.
Absolutely, thank you.
And there's a digital copy on the file.
All right. Yeah, actually, I have it too, if you guys want the digital, I guess, or two, if it allows.
James, last, will you send a digital copy to Heidi?
If, if, yeah, if I can, I don't know if the file's gonna be.
It's only seven. It's small. Okay, I can email it to you, so.
Okay, good job, thank you.
So before James leaves and Steve starts, um, I don't know if I told before this, but I, I got with James last planning meeting, we talked about my office three minutes. Because I, I think by hiring a deputy public guardian, it'll free up Lynn to do that, so that, that's gonna be alleviated, Ja- James is concerned about planning commission meeting. That's gonna be alleviated. My office will take care of it. Maybe the next, maybe the next time, maybe not for tonight, because we haven't hired anybody yet.
Oh, all right.
The office copy?
Tonight, tonight's not gonna be that big of a deal, there's not, there's not that much chance, so it's.
Well, and besides, actually being there is, and doing it from that too, is, is better than just hearing the.
Just a recording, it's fine. So if we can start that in December.
Okay, and when, when Lynn does her, is she, is she going to go?
I'm asking.
Okay.
She'll probably kick me, but we'll work it out.
Yeah, yeah, it's not, it's not, you know, making sure how to get it set up or get everything set up.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You guys might, I don't know if she's gonna go. Maybe just give her the.
Yeah. All right, anything else, guys? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve. We did look over your report.
New cases.
It's a little bit misleading.
Oh.
Um, yeah, you kinda go on like, why do I even need this position, you only had one case last month. Uh, I'm sure you guys know how much law enforcement, uh, is facing some troubles, and I think that's reflected in terms of the amount of new cases. The one new case actually comes from the prison, and that's pretty serious, well, uh, category A. But, uh, but yeah, I, I think that largely, um, is why you see that, uh, lowest number, uh, in almost a decade or a half being here. But rest assured, still plenty busy, Monday, uh, was a very long day in district court, so there's still plenty of work going on. Um, I think I've got my hands around the state engine defense reporting aspect. Um, you know, it's, it's been a change going back to documenting every five months of what you're doing every day, but, um, it's, it's transitioning better than it was, I think, last, uh, a month ago when we met, um.
When is that report due to them?
With, I, I guess, so there are quarterly reports, um, and that was the last one, I think, was due the middle of October. Um, but, but I'm, I was talking about the daily reporting that, that I'm doing now on a everyday basis. Uh, and that realistically, um, this is a big chunk of time now. Um, but yeah, there were some late nights here a couple of weeks ago, but like I said, I don't think that should be needed anymore in regard to the, the data reporting, so. Um, I, I think I was a little, I don't know, panicky hearing, have an anxiety about it, uh, last month, but I, I don't know.
So could you provide us with quarterly reports that you send to the state?
Yes, I.
You know, get.
Do they vary, I, I'm under the impression that it's the same data, same, same reports, um.
I don't know, I, I don't know what it looks like.
Certainly, um, it, it, it might, I, I guess what I'm saying is, yeah, if, if we give it to you, it might seem like a duplicate of the last quarterly report. Because that, we're just, you know, compiling our numbers in terms of the monthly reporting, you give it four times a year to them, so, but we'll, yeah, we'll give you what we gave them on.
Okay.
Fifteenth of October.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'll get it to Karen.
It'll do.
That's awesome, thank you.
Thank you, anything else? That's all I got.
Yep, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Items for future agendas.
I don't have anything other than what we've discussed.
So the next thing up is board report. Jane?
Um, I will, Carol's going to, um, to the FTC, or Zoom it, November eighth. Um. I I don't know if that's ever gonna go anywhere, I mean, with all the individuals, I don't think in the end, anybody's gonna agree with anything. That's just, I mean, that's just my perception, but it's hanging in there and trying to get it done. And, and they do have the, the MOUs and stuff signed because I had had enough at the last meeting in person, and I just started making motions because it wasn't gonna go anywhere. And so if Carol will do that in the next one, so it does move forward, it would be helpful. Other than that, I will be attending water meetings via Zoom, as long as I can get my husband to stay put. And I will be attending the next meeting via Zoom.
So we had a safety meeting yesterday that went well. And there is a safety manual that will be brought before the commission, probably February or March, after the committee's reviewed it and made up any updates, just so that the commission is aware of the safety items and everything. Hospital board, the hospital is having the issue, the same issue that every other hospital is having, and that is staffing, and they're doing the best that they can. They're having a problem, you know, transferring patients because of lack of beds in other hospitals for the same reason. So it just depends on what's hap, what's going on. And I, I feel for the staff, because I know they're getting really tired, just like all the other healthcare providers there. It's been going on for so long now, and then the flu season, I guess, is starting up a little bit too. Let's see, cemetery board, they'll be meeting probably coming up pretty soon, the cemeteries look great. The lady from Churchill, and I forgot her first name, she contacted me regarding health districts, and she will be making a presentation to this commission as soon as she gets, you know, some of the, the outline together, but there's no commitment on our part to it at this point, but she's gonna provide us with information and come before the board. And I think that's about it.
We had a, excuse me, an airport advisory board meeting, we had a TV board advisory board meeting in the last, actually, last week, our Valley TV did go to Toolon Peak to do their biannual trip up there. I couldn't go, so he went by himself, so we didn't go to COAX, which is what we had planned to do. I'm gonna have to make a trip up there in the next few days just to check because of all these power bumps. I've had a couple of them where channels were offline and then came back on. I'll have to go up and do some checking. And then also, we, I have, I gotta make a call to Granite Propane. They need to go fill the tank before the snow covers the road. Public input. For the comments and discussion, no action will be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on our agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Public commentary will generally be limited to three minutes per person. Any public comments? Any comments on Zoom?
It looks like, uh, perhaps Carl Linder.
Who is it?
Carl Linder.
Oh, he's on?
He's on, he's got his microphone here.
Ask him if he has a comment.
Carl, do you have anything?
No, I don't, thank you.
Good, thank you. So next item up is about
That's really pretty.